Good morning, officially called to order regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, February 25th, 2025, here in Coachella. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Nice to see everyone here.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
We're all here. Good morning, everybody. Something about these lights, the red ones, we think it's off, but it's on.
I know. We should go to green.
We went to green up there, but it'd probably be very expensive to change that.
It'll be part of the update that's coming to you sometime. Too many mics on. There we go.
Okay, I know we probably do have some modifications to today's agenda.
Yes, we do, Mr. President. Item 5A, the employee recognition for Mark Young will be continued to March 11th meeting.
Right, and that's retirement, not an anniversary.
It is a retirement, not an anniversary.
Yeah. Are there any other modifications for today?
Not some knowledge?
No, sir.
Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak at this time? I don't see anybody. No. Okay, well, that brings us to our consent calendar, items 6A through G. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Yes, so moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Past 5-0. And on to the action calendar. This is 8A, which is considering the resolution of necessity for these properties. Carrie, good morning.
Good morning. There we go. Okay. That came up quick. Get my notes?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this item was previously presented on January 28th. We had a public hearing on the day, and I just want to briefly correct for the record, the BAI actually said the public hearing was on February 11th, so just to correct it for the record, it was on January 28th. So, the item before you today is a resolution of necessity related to a property acquisition for the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project. And I just want to make it clear, the primary purpose of the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project is to provide flood protection to more than 2,800 acres and over 9,000 residents and businesses. So, CBWD needs to acquire 187 acres to construct the project, and this would be our first property acquisition for the project. In a separate matter, CBWD will have to acquire 550 acres within the Thousand Palms Flood Plain area to meet mitigation required as related to the Coachella Valley Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. However, this is separate from the property needed to construct the project. So, with that being said, today, what, or the ask today is for the Board of Directors to adopt a resolution of necessity, which will allow staff to initiate the eminent domain process to acquire 5.781 acres, which is necessary to construct a portion of the Thousand Palms Flood Control Project. Now, the eminent domain process will be overseen by a court to ensure that it's fair to both parties, and compensation is not at issue in deciding whether to adopt the resolution of necessity. This will be an issue for the court and/or jury to decide. So, as I said, there was a public hearing on January 28th, and that's a requirement prior to adopting a resolution of necessity. So, today, all that needs to be found in order to adopt the resolution are the following four items. Finding number one is that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project. Finding two, the proposed project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible and with the greatest public good and the least private injury. Finding three, the property described in the resolution is necessary for the proposed project. And finding four, that an offer required by Section 7267.2 of the government code has been made to the owner or owners of record. So, I had gone into detail for each of these findings last time during the public hearings, so if there are any questions or you want me to reiterate any of the details for any of those four findings, I'll be glad to, but it's also provided in the staff report. So, in summary, what staff is recommending today is that the Board of Directors adopt the resolution of necessity, authorize legal counsel to commence an eminent domain proceeding to acquire the portions of parcels identified in the staff report, and authorize the general manager to execute any and all documents in the name of the Coachella Valley Water District needed to commence and process an eminent domain proceeding, and then to authorize the expenditures of $122,700. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, are there any questions?
So, Mr. President, the staff report has made with a recommendation, the hearing was held and completed at the last meeting, but if there's any public comments before board consideration, you can certainly entertain those.
And I will add, Mr. President, for the record, there was a letter remarks submitted by Dr. Peter Timberg, which each of the board members has a copy of and will be added to the record. Dr. Timberg is in the audience, so I'm not sure if he has any additional comments to add at this time.
Can I read my comment?
Sure.
Yeah, come on up. Good morning.
Board members, if you pass this resolution of necessity and seize 5.9 acres of our 110 acres, the dikes you will build will periodically flood all 110 acres. You will be destroying the value of all 110 acres. Your staff, your attorneys, and yourselves have understood this from the outset. I do not understand why a public agency with assets of $2 billion and cash and investments of $450 million would want to attempt such an unjust seizure of public, of private property. CBWD has known for the past eight years that the fair cost of the required 550 acres needed for this project is $20,625,000, and has easily made provision to pay it. The staff and the board of CBWD are aware that most of the needed 550 acres is in the hands of two conservation agencies, the California Fish and Wildlife and the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission, which expect and will receive at least the price that was established eight years ago. It is not reasonable or fair for the board to expect us to receive less than will be paid to those agencies, especially when we have been forced to sell to those agencies in the past at a loss 200, 1,215 acres, which is partially going to be used for this project, because we were not permitted to use our property because of conservation concerns. As all of you have been landholders in the Coachella Valley, you should appreciate the unfairness of what you might be doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have my colleague Whitney Soraka on the phone. If there's any questions in the board regarding the legal aspects of this.
Any questions or comments before we proceed? Okay, well, let's try it again.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I don't like agencies, you know, having to use private property for projects, but this project goes way back from the time I was first on the board in terms of developing flood, regional flood control for this project and for this area. And it's 2,800 acres. We, we just put a fair amount of financial resources into North Indio. This connects all of that. It connects the thermal drop where, you know, we put a lot of work, so it's a really an integrated system in this. You know, we, you know, saw the flooding of Hillary happen that was devastating to residents of the valley, and there was certainly an outcry to do more flood control. And we have, I think, $2 billion worth of flood control identified as necessary for the valley. And so, this acreage that we need for this project, I think, is just part of that. So, with that, I would move the resolution of necessity for approval this morning.
Thank you.
And we would recommend two motions, one on the resolution, which is an independent action, and then the other three, two, three, and four can be taken together.
Okay.
First one on the resolution.
Got it. Can't all four be together, huh?
Well, with the resolution, just to be clear, there's one vote with one minutes of votes on that particular resolution. We'd recommend that separate resolution.
Okay, so this is essentially item 8A1.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And with that, I'll second Director Nelson's motion. All right. Any other discussion before we vote? We don't need roll call on this, do we?
You don't need a roll call on this. It does require four fifths vote of the board.
Four, it does require four fifths. Okay, well, then, here, let's give it a go, then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so I think that's a 5-0 there.
Thank you.
Past 5-0.
Then items 2, 3, and 4, Mr. President.
All right, then, is there a motion to make the authorizations in 8A, 2, 3, and 4?
Correct.
Mr. President, I will make that motion for items 2, 3, and 4.
I'll second.
Okay, good. I mean, in that case, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Past 5-0 also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. All right. And on to, looking at here, on to 8B.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Sabrina Neese, Engineering Manager for Domestic Water. This is going to get a little bit wordy, so just to preface it, this is related to awarding a construction contract for well 4632-1. This is related to the Cotino development. It is a requirement of the development. So, the item before you today is to waive the deviation in Zim Industries Incorporated DBA Bakersfield Well &amp; Pump Company's bid as immaterial, reject the bid protest of Southwest Pump &amp; Drilling, authorize the general manager to award a construction contract to Bakersfield Well &amp; Pump in the amount of $1,922,770 for the well 4632-1 drilling project, its specification number 2024-59, and approve additional expenditures for a total request of $2,416,279 per the developer agreement. So, after, we received six bids for the project. Lowest bid was Bakersfield Well &amp; Pump. Southwest Pump &amp; Drilling did submit a bid protest because Bakersfield Well &amp; Pump's mobilization bonds and insurance exceeded 5%. They were at 6.5%. We did consult with legal counsel, BBK provided a recommendation to waive it as immaterial as it provided no advantage over the other bidders. So, what we're proposing to do instead is pay the 5% upfront and then the remaining 1.5% at the end of the project. I can elaborate if.
Yeah, no, I, it sounds straightforward to me.
A little wordy, yeah.
And, I mean, it's a little unusual that the bids came in that close. I mean, they were, what, 19, 17?
Is 17,515 between the two.
Yeah.
Yeah, and typically, the 5% restriction just prevents contractors from front-loading their invoices, so before they actually got it worked on.
Yeah, it seems like a reasonable.
And this doesn't change the bid amount in order to give an advantage over the second bidder in terms of bid amount.
Right. But the rules do state that it's not supposed to be over 5%, right?
Right, and we're not going to allow that.
So, we are allowing that?
No, we're going to have, we're not, we're not going to hold, well, go ahead, Sabrina, you can add.
Yes.
But after the fact, what I know you were saying, so after the fact, we went back to them and said, you have to change this or you can't get the bid.
No, we're actually not changing the bid at all. We will pay the 5% at the beginning of the project as we normally do. The remaining 1.5% that's part of the bid does not get paid until all the work's completed at the end of the project, so it provides them no advantage over the other bidders at all.
I have a question. So, I'm not clear, so is the well already built?
It is not. This is just for drilling. So, we will, we'll award a contract for drilling. Once the well is drilled, then we'll put another project out to bid for the pumping plant construction and complete the equipping of the well.
So, the pumping plant comes next, and then what about the other wells?
Which other, just in?
Yeah, it says here that there are blah, 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 there are four wells altogether. Mr. Neese?
In the back room.
Yeah, in the back.
Oh, those are just sites. So, the developer, in this case Cotino, is required to provide us four well sites. They're only required to equip one of the well sites, and so this will meet that requirement for one of the well sites. The remaining three will just be vacant well sites for future use.
So, the one well site that is being built now will accommodate complete build-out?
Correct, for the entire development.
Okay, thanks.
Sabrina, I have a question on that, too. How are we handling implementation of the chromium treatment? Is that accounted as part of the construction or part of impact fees, or that's just not something that we're dealing with right now?
So, at this point in time, as part of the drilling process, we're going to be obtaining water quality samples, depth discrete, so we'll determine at that time whether or not treatment is required. But our goal is certainly to avoid treatment if at all possible.
Okay.
But if treatment is required?
There is a provision in the contract for them to be responsible for the treatment.
Is that the first time we've done that?
No, I think Carrie can probably speak to this more, but we, there's standard language that we have in our contract.
Well, I don't think we had a major constituent level until recently.
We've, we have had others pay for treatment when we were treating for arsenic for the, the well that was drilled for the K-12 school. So, CB Unified and Coal Ranch and CBWD partnered in two wells, a reservoir, and a transmission main back in the early 2000s. And that's when we built the water treatment plant, number 7802 there on the corner of 66th and Tyler, and.
Right, so is that?
That was a requirement.
So, let's, and I read the thing, I mean, it's unlikely that there's going to be a problem here, but let's say there is, I'm just trying to understand, does the developer pay an upfront fee to cover that, or is it an ongoing cost for treatment?
I think, I think at the time, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to see how it fits into our overall compliance plan, because we're working out all those issues right now, and we may not necessarily have to install treatment if we go with one of our non-treatment alternatives.
Right, but this water's going to be part of our domestic system?
Correct.
So, it'll be blended with other water?
Right.
We have other wells already in place?
Right.
Around there?
Right.
All right, that's kind of interesting. I mean, I guess, to me, it makes more sense as an upfront fee, because otherwise, what, how do you have a, the developer's gone and you're still using the well?
Well, yeah, we, we'll have to work out the range, we wouldn't even know what the fee would be, you know, initially, and so we'd have to work out all those details once we know more, but the well is in an area where most likely we're not going to have to treat, and then we're going to, like Sabrina said, we're going to be very careful about where we screen it, so that.
So, you get the best result?
So, we get the best result.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's good news. I mean, it sounds like it's not likely, but I was just thinking about that also, knowing that it's a big cost and knowing that we've done similar stuff in other areas with the arsenic, so, yeah, thank you, I think that provided an answer.
And one other part that I, if we can circle back on the funding portion, we currently have a $1.5 million deposit from Cotino, and then we will obtain additional deposits from them as the project progresses. They will also be responsible for the pumping plant costs as well. So, we do have this budgeted in our CIP, but it is funded by the developer entirely.
The five?
Correct. Yeah, five is the projected cost of the project, but ultimately, whatever the actual costs are, they will be responsible for that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, but we're really, yeah, also deciding on whether to waive this deviation, which is recommended by BBK. Okay. All right, is there a motion? I was just concerned that I've seen this, I've seen this done before and we've taken the higher bidder because of some deviations in the bid process, and, you know, Southwest, I believe, is local, correct?
Yeah.
That's a kind of, you know.
Our actions in the past depend on the deviations, and in this particular case, BBK has determined it's not material. When they do become material, that is an opportunity, that is when we have to basically say, sorry, can't accept it, so we go to the next bidder. But in this particular case, it would be an exception to that.
It's a, it's an internal policy that, you know, affects the timing of our payments to them. It doesn't affect the amount.
Right, does the waiver give an unfair advantage to this bidder as opposed to the second in this particular case, because it didn't change the bid or the requirement or the bid amount, it didn't give this bidder an advantage over the second bidder?
Okay. I will move approval of item 8B, waiving the deviation.
Okay, yeah, I'll second.
Yeah, that's me, and I'm sorry, that's the entire item 8A, includes all of those actions.
8B?
8B, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, so it's not just waiving the deviations, also.
All of the actions.
All of that, yeah. Yeah. Award the construction contract. All right, yes, we have a motion and a second. All right, well, why don't we vote, then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sabrina.
Yeah. Pete C. Tesoro, this is the Special Domestic Water System and Sanitation System Installation Agreement. Morning.
Hey, Rob. Good morning, Mr. Barrett, and good morning, President Powell, members of the board. My name is Robert Scholl, I'm your Engineering Services Manager. And what we have before you here, this is a special domestic water and sanitation agreement here that's being proposed between CBWD and Tesoro Rancho Mirage LLC, and this is for water and sanitation services for their Brinson Homes project. This is approximately 82 single-family dwelling units that are being proposed, and this is going to be on approximately 34 acres of property just east of Villa Josephina and just south of Ginger Rogers Road in Rancho Mirage. So, the developer is going to be responsible for two pipelines here, one which is the dash line shown in blue. This is a potable water line, it'll be 12 inches here, approximately 1,600 feet that will run from Ginger Rogers Road to just north of Seclude Court, which is that cul-de-sac here, just kind of on the bottom left of the figure there. They will also be installing 1,350 feet of gravity sewer pipeline that's shown in the yellow. That'll be from the development's entrance, and that'll also go to just approx, just to the north of Seclude Court. These, the cost for these pipelines here are the sole responsibility of the developer. CBWD will not be contributing to these. Therefore, this item is to recommend authorizing the general manager to execute a Special Domestic Water System and Sanitation System Installation Agreement with Tesoro Rancho Mirage LLC, and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board has.
I don't really have any questions on the.
Pretty straightforward.
Was this a different project? I can see there's some rough grading of cul-de-sacs and things out there. I mean, is this, was this something else before? You know, in the photo, you can, over on the, on the right-hand side.
Well, Rob's relatively new, so.
Yeah, I know, I don't, I don't recognize the project from anything prior.
Yeah, I, I understand there was a proposal beforehand, and I, I don't know too much about it, but I don't think it got anywhere.
Yeah, it could have been, could have been, yeah, this could be an old photo, too. It might be really, really a long time ago. Okay. Interesting, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, yeah, yeah. Good, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Past 5-0. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
I need you to take this one, because everybody's on this stuff, and the board doesn't have mics, and I can't hear them when they speak, so everybody switch one of their mics.
Oh, my God. Do we have to start all over again?
I might. That one's yours. Okay, thank you.
Maybe we need a little name tag on it.
Okay, so, this brings us to, yeah, information, written communications, I know we have the one from this morning, but there was not, I didn't think there was anything else.
Correct, no, there was nothing in that, will actually be added as part of 8A, so it's considered public comment.
Yes.
For that, not general correspondence.
Yeah, there you go, thank you. And then, this brings us to our informational report on our pipe rig study results. I have a bad feeling about this, because I've already read it. Yeah, Zoe, go ahead. Good morning.
So, good morning, President Powell, members of the board. This informational item is an update on the stanus chloride without filtration pipe rig study. When the study was approved back in August, part of the setup was that we would have a point at which we would look at the interim results. This is a presentation of those interim results. Today with us, we have representatives from our consultant team, Carolina Sanchez from West Yost and Chad Seidel from Corona, who will be providing the presentation. Following the presentation, we will all be available to answer any and all questions that you may have. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chad.
Thanks, Eric.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. Thanks for the opportunity to present these interim results, and as we can step through this together, we'll get the chance to tell you that, the outcomes of that. So, as you will all likely recall, we are here because of the state of California's resumption of the chromium 6MCL in drinking water that started back again in 2023, led to the completion and effective date of the chromium 6MCL at 10 micrograms per liter in October of last year, which then set forth compliance dates based upon water system size, which impact the district in terms of the cove system in October 1st of '26 and ID8 in October 1st of '27. The regulatory language includes best available technologies of either reduction coagulation filtration and an exchange, either strong or weak base, which you have familiar with, and then reverse osmosis. There's other technologies, and we're here to talk specifically about the use of stanus chloride to reduce chromium 6 to chromium 3 without filtration. Now, that was a key part of the overall project that was approved and moved forward, really in a parallel path, the top path there to specifically evaluate stanus chloride, which convened a team of experts and really specifically investigated things at both bench and pilot scale. Also happening at the same time has been the efforts to characterize groundwater and source water quality conditions and all the alternatives that could be considered to achieve compliance and really lead the district to a recommended set of options to proceed. The, so we'll specifically talk about the stanus chloride aspects of things. The team led by West Yost, providing all the aspects of the project management and the operations of the pipe rig. Our team at Corona Environmental Consulting, bringing a lot of history with this question of stanus chloride in drinking water and the performance evaluation of all the data. Confluence Engineering helped build the equipment and really does a great job with the. a great job with the understanding of distribution system water quality conditions. And we, we really sought out and brought in terrific experts associated with this subject. So, Dr. Phil Branch Huber, he and I had the pleasure of assessing stanus chloride for chromium-6 treatment, one of the very first times in 2004. Dr. Heizelou at UC Riverside was a part of the previous work that was done in ID-8 and has that technical background and additional research on the subject. And then Paul Westerhoff, professor at Arizona State, done the same in Arizona Water Supplies. And so we really did what we could to bring to bear the best technical expertise to answer some of the critical questions about the potential use of stanus chloride for drinking water treatment. So, this is building on the shoulders of the work that was done years ago with bench scale testing with CBWD waters as well as the full-scale demonstration in ID-8 that was used to demonstrate if chromium-6 could be reduced to lower than the standard and maintained lower than the standard of 10 micrograms per liter through the ID-8 system. And that study led to some remaining questions that, at the time, were effectively paused because the MCL was rescinded and put on pause. And so, everything restarted back again in 2023 with a stanus chloride addition implementation plan that the district put forward to the California Division of Drinking Water, which provided conditional approval to proceed with that plan, which included full-scale demonstration if so desired at the time. And in March of last year, submitted an amendment to that, which was approved in May of last year. And that really focused in on what is the best way to answer those remaining questions about stanus if it were to be applied directly to the water without filtration. And that led to the pipe rig testing that began in October of last year. So, following that, we, we have a very deliberate approach. We had specific protocols developed for testing built upon the work that had been done previously at bench, pilot, and full scale, identifying the questions and concerns that had been raised at that time but had not yet been fully answered. Because of those, we implemented this phase testing approach because there were some critical initial questions that we knew had to be better answered before it would be worthwhile proceeding to the next phase. So which brings us here today for the review of the interim results to decide whether or not to continue that testing and recommend whether or not full scale should proceed or not. All of this guided by this implementation plan that was approved by the Division of Drinking Water to evaluate those results. And it certainly, kudos to the district for taking this approach to help answer the question, not only for the district but for obviously many other water systems that are impacted by the chromium-6 MCL. So, a few pictures to describe the types of efforts that were done. Lots of jar testing that was conducted in many cases over the last several years by district staff. Our team provided additional jar testing with waters representative of the types of groundwaters in the district that would be impacted. Confluence built a terrific pipe rig that helped us very specifically ask and answer questions that had not been previously able to be asked and answered without this type of approach. And so, I'll give you a quick overview schematic of this, and I know several of you had the opportunity to visit the pipe rack equipment previously, but we have water coming from well 3408. It takes water off to the side of that with backflow preventers, so we don't have any implications to the full-scale system, can monitor pressure and flow there. And at the top, we have the control system. So we're just testing how does the system operate with copper pipes, PVC pipe, both new and harvested. And we also looked at the use of something that would be representative of a home filter. So we have a 5-micron filter at the end of one of those pipe segments. So we can assess the degree to which that might be implicated differently in the control system versus, obviously, the next part is the experimental side of the pipe rig, which is where we're adding stanus chloride through a metering pump, mixing. There's a short period of reduction contact time, which is important to allow the chemistry to reduce the chromium-6 to chromium-3, add chlorine, and then it goes through the very, very similar experimental condition. And remember, the objective here would be that if it were possible to simply reduce chromium-6 to chromium-3, chromium-6 being regulated and being a concern for long-term carcinogenic health effects, to chromium-3, which is only indirectly regulated by a higher total chromium MCL, but also chromium-3 is a known micronutrient. You can buy chromium-3 at the health food store as a supplement. One could consider not taking the chromium out of the water, but leaving it in the water and just ensuring that it's in the chromium-3 state, which has always been the goal of this type of research. The questions that we're trying to answer in this case are to further confirm that objective being accomplished, but other detrimental aspects perhaps being avoided, which gets us to the success and failure criteria. So we established these four primary, and there's several other secondary success and failure criteria established, but obviously, the first thing that would have to happen is that we could successfully reduce chromium-6 to chromium-3 and maintain it less than 10 micrograms per liter for an extended period of time, as would be the case in a full-scale system. That's widely been demonstrated in previous efforts. In fact, the work that the district did previously helped answer that. It were, it was these additional parameters of, well, what happens with the fate of both chromium and tin? So we have total chromium and total tin with thresholds either equal to the total chromium MCL of 50 micrograms per liter, needing to stay below that, and tin needing to stay below the NSF max use limit, which is certified at 630 micrograms per liter or 0.63 milligrams per liter. Last is turbidity. There's a less than 5 NTU limit for aesthetic quality, and we applied that. Given that it's a groundwater system, it's not a direct requirement, but at the same time, it's really an expectation of if you have turbidity of greater than that, it would be a concern for public, certainly the aesthetics of that. So applying these success and failure criteria to the first few, first three months or so of the operation of the pipe rack, we'll just present to you how those results played out for the various ways that we've tested it, both new copper and PVC pipes, the new PVC with that 5-micron filter, and then the harvested pipes, either galvanized or PVC. And unfortunately, as you alluded to at the beginning, we've experienced failure for the thresholds of total chromium, tin, and turbidity in almost all of those cases, which fundamentally answers one of the critical questions that had not been able to be previously investigated in this way, which is, we are adding stanus, it is reducing chromium-6 to chromium-3, which is resulting to the formation of particles that either are filterable or accumulate and then release. And that's what we'll see on the subsequent graphs. These are time series graphs of approximately the first three months of operation just for the copper pipes, which I will tell you, the copper pipes are, you know, they're pretty clean, new pipes. Applying stanus, you'll note that there's a dash line that's very, very low on that graph because the concentrations go up to, you know, up as high as 3,000 micrograms per liter or milligram per liter of chromium here. And we operated this pipe rig in a period of time every day where the water is flowing, and then a period of time where it stopped flowing, and then it resumes, and so it's on a timer cycle every day. The orange points that you see with high concentrations occasionally represent the samples collected during a stagnation period, meaning when the water wasn't flowing and then had a chance to pull the sample right when it was stagnated and started up again, we were seeing elevated concentrations of total chromium well in excess of the 50 microgram, uh, microgram per liter total chromium standard. At the very end of the experimental period, as we saw these earlier results of unfortunately exceeding our, our failure conditions, we also did some flushing to understand if a higher flow rate would have any impact on releasing those types of particulate within the, within the pipe system. And we did see that flushing in a flowing sample also was pushing tin and chromium through those samples. So this is the result for the chromium. The next slide is the tin, and you'll note that we're, we're in some cases seeing in excess of 20 to 60 milligram per liter of tin in those concentrations. Now, keep in mind, this is also within a very short period of time of adding tin to the system. And so I'll just say, not shown here in detail, but in the technical report, mass balance of tin and chromium does a pretty good job of tracking the tin and chromium. So we, in a small, controlled experiment, we were able to monitor how much tin was being added, how much chromium was being added, and see that it was in large part able to be recovered after it was fully flushed out. So with that in mind, a couple other quick pictures to give you some examples of things. The 5-micron filter is a good surrogate for what might be of potential concern if cuffed, if customers were to receive water that had stanus. And you'll note on the top left there, household filters, that 5-micron filter, a new one, clean and white, after just 3,000 gallons of water passed through, has a signature greenish tinge of color from both the tin and the chromium. And we were only able to operate those filters for on the order of 3,000 to maybe 5,000 gallons. We're talking about roughly a week or so of operation on that stop-start cycle. Before, if you see on the next slide, it exceeded head loss conditions, and we were not able to continue passing water through a 5-micron filter. On the other side, the control, which has some typical rust color associated with well operation, not a concern at all, ran for over 100,000 gallons and never had any pressure drop concerns, which would be as expected. So, the, the conclusion really comes back to what I was mentioning before. The objective of adding stanus to reduce chromium-6 to chromium-3 and then keeping everything in solution and it just passing through to the tap has not been successfully achieved because the tin and the chromium are forming particles which then find places to settle out and then occasionally release at higher concentrations of concern. And so that, that research, then, a couple more pictures. These are some of the samples collected after stagnation. You can see those somewhat fluffy-looking tin chromium particles in a sample collected on the left. And then after eight weeks of, or 12 weeks of operation, rather, and just over 180,000 gallons of water passed through the pipe, that was what it looked like on the inside of one of those copper pipes.
So what's the, that's blue, though, right? I mean, the, the filter was green, and now this is blue?
Yeah, it's, I would say that the color detail on this screen probably doesn't do it quite as much justice. It's much more of a, a greenish-blueish tinge that's not so much copper-related. It looks the same in the PVC pipe as it does in the copper pipe. We didn't see copper being of significant concern coming off the new copper pipes. It, it does present itself when you filter it much more of that greenish color. So the key questions that we were working to answer as a team with the Technical Advisor Committee was, should CBWD continue the pipe rig study? Should it move forward with a full-scale demonstration as was planned to further investigate this within the ID-8 system perhaps? And then would the California Division of Drinking Water approve a permit to use this without filtration based upon the available data because that was the position that they were in previously? And unfortunately, the answer to each of these three questions is no based upon the outcomes of the results that we've seen from this interim testing. And so with that, I'm glad to answer any questions, to describe some of the technical details further or as you wish on that subject, noting that clearly the team is focusing its efforts on the evaluation of all the other compliance options with stanus without direct, without filtration not being a meaningful approach to move forward because ultimately, the district still needs to get to a point of choosing the recommended optimal compliance option.
Yeah, so the characterization of the water at this particular well, is it unique? And would we get different results somewhere else?
That's a great question. So, not shown here are results from bench scale testing, where we assessed the question just as you posed. Does this water represent all the other water sources that would perhaps use this? And the bench scale testing yielded similar results of being able to clearly identify particle formation for tin and chromium that was similar to this, this water in the well 3408 location in ID-8. As another point of example, this was a more detailed pipe rack experiment modeled after a similar yet less sophisticated version that was conducted in Dixon, California late last year, and some of that was presented previously to the team and the technical advisors. And Dixon just, just west of Davis and Sacramento experienced the same results in a water there that also had chromium above the standard, but somewhat different water quality in terms of its background conditions. So we're, we're seeing this play out in this way in a, in a few cases.
Are we going to be able to, to complete the alternative evaluations by the, and implement whatever by the compliance period?
So the range of alternatives that are being tested span from non-treatment alternatives and moving water around that has currently in compliance and not using water that's out of compliance to implementing treatment alternatives. And the answer for the non-treatment alternatives is yes. The answer for the treatment alternatives is likely no, given the short duration that DDW put forth for the compliance plan. But glad to have more district description of that.
I think, just kind of want to set the expectations here of when we'll be coming to the board with additional information. We are working through an evaluation to look at a range of options, including leaning into the parts of our basin where chrome 6 is low. And right now, the, the timeline on that would be to have a workshop with the board during Q2 of this year, and to have a compliance plan submitted to DDW by June or July of 2025. That's over a year in advance of the compliance date for our COE system. But I think whichever method you look at, there is a level of treatment or infrastructure work that is going to be needed. So our expectation at least, and I, you know, just want to set that clear, our expectation for the COE system is that given that compliance is less than two years away, that there will be a period that the district will likely be out of compliance. That, this is not something that is unique to the district. It's something that the majority of systems that have issues with chrome 6 are facing, and it's particularly true of systems like those in the Coachella Valley where half, a third, or 100% of their sources are going to be impacted. And we are working collaboratively with the agencies in the valley, have a meeting now that we've released these interim results to talk about a variety of issues that interest all of us, including how to coordinate on the monitoring periods that are allowed by DDW as well as communication-related tier-two notifications that will be required when a system is officially out of compliance.
Thanks, Zoe.
Doctor, I, I had a question just to look at the thresholds for chromium and, and the tin. And, I mean, those are big spikes, right? There's, it's not even close to where we could say, hey, well, maybe if we did something, because it's close enough, maybe we could get to what we're trying to hit. But it just seems from the graph that it's, I mean, it's just really off the scale. Is that, is that accurate?
I would agree with that statement. The, the follow-on to that is, if you want, as you were describing, what could be done to address that? The simple answer is, you would filter it before it would be distributed to the distribution system, which is one of the options that's being considered in the alternatives analysis, but not so much with stanus, but with ferris iron as a reductant, simply because it's less expensive and more well-understood and already applied in that way. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Jim and, and doctor, so what's the next step here? Do we owe, do we owe DDW some type of report that lets them know that, that we're moving on with something else, that we've concluded this? What, what do we do next with, with this whole effort on the stanus side?
With respect to the communication with DDW, not only is the district, but all of the, the utilities in the valley collaboratively working on different aspects of chromium compliance, Zoe mentioned the upcoming meeting with that group. I, I think as a team, our expectation is out of that will come some joint communication, certainly led by the district sharing the results with DDW. So DDW has a sense of how this played out in this case. Because not only does it impact this community, there are some others that are. that are obviously wanting to know what might be their best options as well. From that, we're actually pressing DDW to answer several of the questions of more clearly defining their expectations for what communication will be needed and when with respect to compliance plans and all of the aspects associated with monitoring leading up to and then beyond the point of the effective date of the regulation.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we can include the request for more time. You know, that's the thing, we, we don't want to rush this. There's, it's really complicated to try to treat these, these systems. And we don't want to get it wrong. So we've, we've got to do it right. And it takes time to do it right.
Correct.
You know, and they're forcing us to do it by a certain date. And you're going to have to rush to meet that need. So we're, so we're not going to be able to. I mean, you can't. Yeah.
Just that, that or spend a half a billion dollars and just...
But even that would take, it would put you past the deadline.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for that. Board General comments. Director Nelson?
No, no real comments today. Just that state water project still is at 20%. There's a ops committee meeting this afternoon. So we're all hopeful that it's going to go up this afternoon. Cross your fingers. Yeah, my guess is 30%, but yeah. Look, Orville's full, San Luis is, the state side is 90%. So the snowpack is 115% of normal or like 90% of the April 1st average. So I don't know why it wouldn't go up to 30%.
Maybe we'll get 30.
50.
Yeah, maybe we'll get 50. Yeah, but I think we, we should get 30. That's my guess. Other than that, other comments?
Director Bianco.
Did he skip it?
Yeah, no, I told him no comment.
Oh, no comments. We're moving fast here. Got anything? No? No comment also? Oh, gosh. Me, me also. No, no comment. Do we have any requests for, from the board for future agenda items? Hearing, let's do the meetings, February 11. Oh, we had, yeah, that's right. After the board meeting that day, we had a, a little meeting with staff about possibly some difficulty with folks connecting to the Oasis system. I think we talked through that fairly satisfactorily.
No, I think we did. I, I had some follow-up meetings with some landowners and calls with Kerry. And I think that that is progressing pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
February 13th, CVCC, Director Bianco.
We have some acquisitions, some parcels, one in the storm, two, two parcels in the Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel, one parcel on Indio Hills, Joshua Tree. And on our Environmental and Sustainable Committee was the same day. The most concerning thing for me is an proposed amendment to South Coast Air Quota District's rules phasing out gas, water heaters and furnaces. And I, I just don't know where we're headed. And so I've called for a vote. This was just an information, but I've called for a vote of the committee just to see if we're in favor of this. Because I would imagine that I think the majority of them are not in favor of phasing out gas, water heaters and gas stoves. So, which is a pretty big thing, you know? And, and the way they're going to, to, to fund it is in the next 10 years, anybody who puts a new gas or gas stove or furnace in is going to pay an additional fee that goes into a pot where you'll give that money to other people who want to change. But I don't think this is the direction of the Coachella Valley. I know this is not water, but it's not the direction, in my opinion, that we want to go. Even some really left-leaning cities in Northern California shot this down. And, you know, to, to ask all of our restaurants to cook on electric stoves and to ask some of our maybe poorer residents here in the Coachella Valley whose furnace may go out or stove needs to go out, that they need to not only buy a electric furnace or stove, but they also need to get electricity when we have electricity problems here in the Coachella Valley. And what does that do to someone's home who has an older panel? And those costs that I just think people aren't thinking about this is just not rational.
They have to rewire the house, too. Because a lot of times you don't have...
Enough power.
Power.
You don't have a 240.
You don't have an additional app, you know, to, to put up the apps needed. So this is something that's on the horizon. So we'll, we'll see what happens.
Was, was that the energy committee that was doing the gas thing?
They, they, they're not doing it. They just got a proposal from AQMD. And so everyone just listened. And I said, well, why don't you guys speak up and say, you don't want this? You know, instead of just allowing it to, you know?
Yeah. I like that.
Keep going.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll see.
Fight the man. So...
I mean, I told them, oh, you guys are running the cities. I'm just a water guy. So, I mean, you guys got to step up.
Yeah, they do. February 17th, Salt and Sea Authority, Director Angola.
Yeah, John, this was a special meeting that had been called by, by the President, Patrick. There was a timing issue on a, on a contract with the federal government for the, the federal study. There was a modest change in the amount of the total contract, which was 22,299,000. And it had to be signed by a particular date. And so the special meeting was called to prove that change. And then also there was a, a second item and it related to the AFCON consultant group is doing the Desert Insurance Project. It was a minor change in their contract for them to cover prevailing wages. And that was it.
Okay. Thank you. Study session on February 18th, three of us were there to go over some early budget information. And February 24th, California Farm Water Coalition.
Yeah, that was yesterday. Had a good report on the coalition came through both Coachella and Imperial Valley and did some Instagram influencer tours, which should highlight Coachella agriculture and Imperial Valley agriculture. So, so that's good. We're discussing and the board approved a modest three cent per acre dues increase for the coming year. Haven't increased due since 2009, I believe. So quite a few years. So that's, we approved that and it'll go out to a vote of the members. So eventually it'll come around to, to this group as well. So that would be effective as of 2026. And that was, that was about it.
Okay. I know there are probably some other meetings. We had an Agrocolli Anti-P principles meeting on February 19th that will be our last, maybe?
Thanks.
Except for the signing ceremony, we hope. It's the 13-year overnight success. Any other meetings?
Yeah, John, I had two meetings on the 19th. I attended a FLUM webinar presentation. I'm a big FLUM advocate, got a couple of them. And so they presented some data. It's just fascinating to see that machine learning that they can do and figure out whether your water use at any particular moment. They take five-second intervals of data reading and they can tell whether it's outdoor or indoor use, whether it's your washing machine or, or your dishwasher, right? So pretty cool stuff. Scott tells me we have nearly a thousand units in Coachella Valley. So, you know, it's being adopted and we're providing some rebates for that as well, discounted, I think, purchases. So, yeah. So, you know, I think it's a great tool and, you know, I certainly appreciate it. Kind of cool to see the data. And, you know, they also provide data to districts to see, so the districts can analyze some of this data and make decisions about it. So the San Diego County Water Authority made a presentation during this webinar about how they're using it. I've talked to the staff here and it's kind of expensive. So they're, they're cooling their jets on that for a while. So, which is, which is fine. And then, so that's the 19th. On the 21st, I attended a sites reservoir committee as well as the authority board, listened in on that. Robert was there in person. Sites is actually purchasing property up to build the reservoir. So they, they had a 1,200-acre agenda item to, to purchase. And it's a very amenable process. So there are willing buyers and, and sites is a willing seller. So that's, that's good to see. Some generational farmers, too. So, you know, that's a, that's a good process. Appreciated that. Of course, the incidental take permit, which is like the SEQA permit, was approved back in October for their operations and, and construction both. So that's good. And the water rights hearings are going on right now. So I think they're, you know, through February into March and should be determined how much and where a water right diversion would be approved. So hopefully that goes well. Hopefully that goes well. And, and with that, if construction could start in 2026 and potentially be completed in 2032. So that would be an, an additional 10,000 acre feet for Coachella.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's our report.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. Any other meetings?
Yes, I had a meeting on the 13th, Executive Committee for the Salt Sea Authority. So met with the President and the Executive Director to talk about next year's budget. We're also thinking about how to make a request for the $10 million that's set aside under Prop 4 between either the Conservancy or the Salt Sea Authority. So thinking about how to make that pitch. And then we talked about requesting a meeting with the Assistant Secretary of Salt Sea Policy, similar to what we did or what he's been doing with some of the other agencies. And then there's a letter that we're working on, which I think will be presented at the next Salt Sea Authority meeting. I don't know if a draft was circulated already, but it's essentially some, some general comments and thoughts on the appointment of the Executive Director of the Conservancy. We know that needs to be done soon by the Secretary of Natural Resources, Mr. Crowfoot. So that's a letter talking about that. So that's, that's what we talked about. Thank you.
Is there a motion approved per diem for the meetings reported on?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, second.
Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pass five-oh, General Manager.
Yes, sir. Just a couple of things. I have a form from the California Special Districts Association asking for nominations for an open board seat that they have on the California Special Districts Association. So if you're interested, please let me know. The Gulf and Water Task Force meets tomorrow at 1 o'clock. Well, actually, in Palm Desert. And then the Urban Water Institute Conference is taking place in Palm Springs, starting tomorrow afternoon, all day Thursday and Friday morning. I registered for that, but will be unable to attend. So I think we're, still looking for somebody who might be able to take advantage of that. I will tell you, though, that my lunch choice was fish, if that makes a difference. Usually not the safest thing, but that's all I got to say.
Depends where.
We're at Palm Springs.
Counsel, come in. Yes, just a couple of things. Mr. President, wanted to mention, as you know, California for various projects and grant funding, we need to comply with SEQA. And for federal funding and projects, we have to comply with NEPA, the federal version. The executive order issued by the President called the Unleashing American Energy EO, which was issued in January, directed the Council on Environmental Quality, CEQ, which is a federal agency, to expedite projects and to reduce the amount of time taken for NEPA compliance at various federal agencies. As a result, this Council of Economic on Environmental Quality rescinded its own regulations that have been in place for, I think, 17 years that laid out a whole scheme for NEPA compliance. And instead directed each particular agency that if they have a project subject to NEPA, to follow just their own environmental NEPA rules at that agency and review those rules to make sure that they're as expeditious as possible. So that's an ongoing process. The CEQ will be having regular meetings with these other agencies to see what those agencies are doing on, on NEPA and what is necessary and not as opposed to having an overlay of the additional NEPA rules at the council level. The incidental take permit was issued for the Delta Conveyance Project, which is another step to getting the Delta Conveyance Project approved. That was issued by the Department of Fish and Wildlife on February 14th. So those are my two items.
Thank you. Do we have any...
No, sir.
At this time, the board will recess into closed session to consider those items shown on the agenda. They'll reconvene to open session to report out what's at stake. All right. So the regular meeting is reconvened. We do not have any reportable action from our closed session. And with no further business, we're adjourned.